Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay, uh, we are recording now.
Okay.
Randy's here by the way.
Make a motion to
Wait, roll call.
Call the Planning, Zoning and Bu- Building Committee to order, uh, roll call please.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes, here.
Okay, Alderman Jacob?
Yeah.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski? Alderman Murray Wesley? Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Here.
Alderman Catalano?
Here.
Alderman Messina?
Here.
Okay, uh, make the motion to approve the minutes for March twelfth, twenty twenty from the Planning, Building, uh, Planning, Zoning Committee?
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Is that a second Eugene?
Is that a second?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
All in favor?
Uh.
Opposed?
One opposed. Opposed.
Okay, that passes.
Who's opposed?
Are opposed? Opposed? Okay, and next, report on recommendation, approval of a special use and major site plan review for the U D O for case number twenty twenty dash C D C dash O two for an employment agency to be located at three forty-five East Irving Park Road, west suite within the C two zoning district. Uh, Ed, you're gonna talk about this? I make that motion.
Ed, Ed, y- yes, thank you Chairman, this is, uh, an application with the C D C.
I make that as a motion too, uh, before we get started, I make the motion to approve.
Second, Alderman Woods.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead, Ed.
Uh, thank you, it's Ed again, um, so this is somewhat similar to another request we had on Irving Park Road, this one's actually at three forty-five East Irving Park Road. Um, it's half of the, um, first floor of the building, uh, previously used to be occupied by Source One, uh, between, I believe, two thousand and nine, two thousand and seventeen. So it's the same kind of use going into the building, um, they do comply with the parking regulations. Uh, one kind of quirk is that they have some parking on site, they're gonna add one additional parking space on site to six, but they do have the adjacent parking spaces in the right of way. So it is a special use and a, a major site plan review, um, and the C D C recommended approval four to one, and, um, staff recommends approval, thank you.
Can I be recognized, Tom, Kevin?
Uh, Alderman, Alderman Woods, go ahead.
No, it was Tony.
Oh, was it Catalano? I'm sorry, Tony.
Yeah.
But my, my question is, is the, uh, the, the handicap, um, they said one's required, but there's none out there, so what's, what's the deal with that? I mean, uh, I mean, my opinion is, um, you know, by state law, they should have a handicap parking spot there.
Yeah, this is Ed, um-
Ed, go ahead, Ed.
Yeah, so, um, excellent point, Alderman Catalano, there is no, with some of the existing businesses, they, um, whatever reason, they, uh, did not meet the code. Um, so what we could ask them to do is strike one of their parking spaces for handicaps, so they are in compliance. I think they'd be certainly willing to do that, obviously, we would lose, uh, one, so if you, they add one space and we kind of add a handicap space, that would eliminate one space, 'cause they essentially take up two. Um, but that would be, um, okay, because we have enough, we have one additional space, so if that's a condition, we can certainly, and I'm sure the applicant would, uh, would be happy to do that.
Alderman Wesley, like to be recognized, please.
Uh, Alderman Wesley?
I have a, a question, how many people are gonna be in that building, working in that building?
Uh, so, Ed again, um, the applicant did, um, note that they would have, I believe it was two employees, and I'm just double checking that, uh, yes, that's correct. So, uh, the applicant indicated they would have two employees on site, um, and then obviously you would have, uh, a number of clients per day, but two employees.
Two employees and how many clients, they think, on site?
Uh, two employees and ten to twelve clients per day, and when they say per day, the operating hours are eight A M. to five P M., so staggered through the day.
May I continue, please?
Yeah, go ahead.
Alright, so my question is, how many parking spaces are there now?
So Alderman Wesley, there are, let's see here, um, there are, existing, there are five on the property, which they're gonna add one, but essentially it will remain five, because we just talked about the handicap parking. So five on site, and then eight within the street right of way. So, um, thirteen, um, parking spaces minus the one for the handicaps, so it'd be twelve, which is what the code requires, twelve.
The only drawback, I'm sorry, the only drawback I have on this is I just, I just see them going over to twelve, and they end up parking in our lot next to us, that we own that building. Um, I mean, it's our property, I mean, we got those people parking that lot overnight now, some of those people, um, so that's a concern I have.
Ed, do you have anything, response or anything?
Yeah, the, but the answer would be yes, we, the city currently owns the property, which I think was the former Helen's Restaurant to the west. Um, what we can do, as we did with the other, um, employment agency, uh, I think what we would probably want to do, obviously, if, if they have a busy period, uh, the employees, um, obviously can either carpool, um, or park in a different location. So we'll, I'll relay that concern to the applicant, and I think the other applicant had a, had a good idea of, you know, if they have two employees, they either carpool or they park at another location, so they don't have a problem.
I, I have a question, this is Alderman Jacob, um, so I was told by staff, and I don't remember which, who told me this, but, and looking at this, uh, special use location map from the, what you sent, the presentation, um, I was told that they, that they are allowed to park there, because that's their parking, the parking spots against the building, against their building from Helen's, is their parking spots. And looking at this, for the first page, I mean, or, yeah, page one, location map, it doesn't look like those parked cars parked there on that picture are, and they're, it looks like city property.
Yeah, so this is, this is Ed, um, you're correct, Alderman Jacob, so, um, I think it's on slide six of the PowerPoint, it shows the property line in yellow, so-
Yep, yep.
Yeah, the parking spaces on the property are to the north of the building, that's the one through six, obviously, that's gonna be dropped to five with the proposed handicap parking space. Um, the additional, I think it's eight, one, two, three, four, five, six, yeah, the eight to the east are in the city right of way, uh, but there's a provision in the park, in the U D O that they can use those parking spaces. The parking to the west, which I think Alderman Wesley just mentioned about, you know, the Helen's property, which is, uh, Helen's, former Helen's Restaurant-
That, yeah, that's what I'm asking about.
Yeah, that's owned by the city, those are not on that property, it's on the city's property.
Okay, well, again, I'm not sure, but at one point I was told that that's their property, so, I, and with that being the case, I mean, I don't see, I don't even see how we could,
No.
How, how would they would have adequate parking, and we shouldn't have cars parking there overnight, I mean, that's city property, unless they have some kind of agreement with us.
Right, so Ed again, they, so with the proposal, even with the one handicap space, they meet the code, um, the issue of parking on city property, obviously, we're not using that property at this time. Um, but I think, you know, moving forward, obviously, we're gonna have some plans a- at a future point to develop that property. The applicant is gonna have to address parking on site, if they have two employees, uh, and they're running into parking issues, um, it's gonna be an enforcement issue, and we're gonna tell them that the, well, I, I'm gonna tell them after tonight, that the city council has some concerns and some issues about parking, uh, and they should come up with a parking plan to address that.
Yeah, well, like I said, my biggest concern on that is there, when you look at the drawing, and I look at all the cars parked there now, I, and I'm not sure when that was taken, if Helen's was still open when that picture was taken, but I still see cars over there all the time, so they'll definitely be going over the parking, and there's, isn't this an apartment building as well?
The, yes, there's a-
Okay, Mr. Gabe?
Yeah. Uh, Ed again, sorry, um, yeah, the apartment buildings are on the second floor, some of the parking that is there, um, this is from an area from two thousand and sixteen, so I'm gonna hazard a guess that some of that parking is probably from some of the apartments, and some of it is for Helen's. Um, but at some, at some point, that's the city's property, we're gonna redevelop it, they won't be able to park there, and I'll, I'll convey that to the applicant.
Okay.
Alderman Woods.
Any more, any more questions? Alderman Woods, go ahead.
Alderman Woods, yeah. Ed, uh, the, the question for Ed, first of all, how come, how come we weren't, uh, in the packet, given the survey and the floor plans and stuff that, uh, were given to the C D C? It references them in our packet, but we don't actually have the documents.
Right. Think that's just an oversight on, uh, on my part, sorry about that.
So, if, if, if I may continue, 'cause I do have a copy, I'm looking-
Yeah, go ahead.
At the parking, I'm looking at the parking they're looking to add, and spots five and six, which are right at the corner, uh, of their lot, looks like because of the, uh, angle of their lot, a- as it goes towards hemlock, the, the lock gets shorter at that corner, forcing them to push the cars forward. So for one, does that meet our codes or rules for sightline triangle, being that, uh, intersection with the, with the alley and the street, if they were to try to put the spot there?
Ed, go ahead.
So the, uh, the sight triangle is measured from the edge of the curb, um, so, I mean, it's gonna have to be in compliance, so it, it either is or it isn't, so if it's not, then obviously, they're gonna have to lose that parking space, which I think they're gonna lose anyway, because it's, they're gonna, um, add the handicap parking space.
Okay, and, and if I can continue, so, when I've gone around this building-
Yeah, go ahead.
Typically, the majority of these spots are already taken up, so there, there probably is gonna be some parking issue, but let me specifically ask, so the code allows us to use, or that property to use the adjacent eight, eight spaces on the street, but what happens when five of the neighbors are already using five of those spaces? Do we just then not have spaces, or, or neighbors aren't allowed to use it, and it's quasi their parking spaces, how does that work?
Well, this is-
Go ahead, Ed.
Ed, Ed again, uh, thank you Chairman, I mean, this is an issue up and down Irving Park Road, I, I know that you guys know it just as well as I do, that parking's at a premium, because land's at a premium, the code allows it, but you're correct, that, you know, if, for example, you have two or three people parking there, then that, it's gonna be a challenge. So my, my initial, my initial thought is, um, obviously with Helen's open, it's not gonna be an issue until we redevelop Helen's, um, and then it will be, it will force the issue of parking.
Well, that, that assumes that we allow them to park in Helen's, but, let me say this, the, the parking there's issues, and like you said, we, we know that there's gonna continue to be issues on and off with, with all these buildings, 'cause they're smaller buildings, there's not enough parking for them, and that's what we've been fighting in the T C B from the day I got on, on the council, and so for me, to try to fit this, you know, square peg in the round hole, uh, you know, I guess the two things that we consider when looking at, uh, special use is, one, the impact on the neighboring land, which I guess we could all make arguments that it does impact or doesn't impact to some degree or not, that would probably be a fifty fifty debate. But the big one for me is the public need for such use, we've already approved a, a, a staffing or an employment agency, probably not a block and a half away from this one, and it's the same issue with parking, so to continue to force places in here when there's not enough parking for them, uh, I, I can't go for that, so I, I, I personally would not be supporting this, I mean, it's, you know, that along with the fact that I, I can't tell what's going in the building, how big the building is, or how many desks or anything, I don't have any of those drawings, uh, uh, I just wouldn't be in support of this.
Alderman, Alderman Messina would like to be recognized?
Go ahead, Alderman Messina.
I concur with Alderman Art Woods, I did see those same drawings, um, I, I, I don't know what, what to say, but, uh, if they put as much effort into the property than they did these renderings, that's a major concern, I mean, there's no effort, there is no breakdown, as Mister, as Alderman Art Woods said, there is no visibility into what they're gonna do inside the building, um, it's, it's, it's pretty bad. Uh, parking is a major, major concern, um, especially the overflow with the apartment buildings, I, I don't think I've ever driven by at any time of the day or night where there's been an open spot there. So the impact on the surrounding area is, is very, very critical, and then of course, to, again, Alderman Woods' point, I'll be the parrot, sorry, um, we ju- we just approved another staffing agency a block and a half away, and this is, um, you know, our T C B area, so I also concur that this is just not the right fit.
Hello, this is Nunzio.
Uh, uh, Mayor, go ahead.
I got a comment. Number one-
Go ahead.
If they meet the criteria with the twelve, then they should get the special use. Now, if for some reason on the drawing or something, and they don't match, that's a different story, then of course, they don't meet the cri- that should be part of the motion, that, that the, it has to be line of sight, like Alderman Woods said. As far as the parking lot, uh, the Helen's, we can control that right away, you put it, you lock up the parking lot, nobody can park there, and, 'cause I know we have no parking signs, right, but just lock up the parking lot and they can't use it, so we don't have to worry about that issue, I mean, a simple, whatever, I don't know, not a, I don't know, chain of some kind or something, parking lot closed, whatever, uh, that would take care of the, but if, if the twelve spots do fit proper, properly now, and it should be made as part of the motion, but if, if there's a line of sight issue that, in that corner, because I'm looking at the corner, the photo, they don't, we don't see how the parking lot goes in there. Well, then, if they only have eleven, then they don't meet that criteria, and they don't get to move in. But the, the motion, I think, should be amended to fit, to o- put in the, uh, handicap parking, number one, because that, you need to take care of those issues, we can't, we cannot bypass that type of stuff, and then it's conditional that it, that they do have twelve spots. And that's the way it should go, a con- a motion with conditions, if they don't come up with the twelve spots, then, you know, if, if there's a problem, uh, where even the line of sight is an issue, well, then they don't get that last spot, we, we're not just gonna squeeze it in the, you know, squeeze it in, it's, it, it has to be legit. But the motion should be to approve, whatever it is, but it should be conditional.
Alder- Alderman Woods?
I'll, I'll amend the motion to approve with conditionally.
With the handicap parking and, and the, and the right amount of parking?
Yeah, with the handicap parking and the right, yep, and the right amount.
Provide all the line of sight is correct, there's not blocking sidewalks, if there's a crosswalk there or whatnot.
Correct. Does the secondar agree?
I'll, I'll agree, but wish to be recognized also.
Yeah, go ahead, uh, Alderman Woods.
Okay, so, uh, for, for starters, I, I disagree, just because they have the spaces that we have to approve it, uh, while that is one of the conditions, that isn't the total condition, and they could meet all the conditions, and by law, and by code, and by statute, we still don't have to pass it, there's a reason that we put it in as a special use, and that it's not allowed by code, except for approval of special use, and that's, 'cause it's in our downtown, you know,
Correct.
It's, it's a more restrictive district, and, and so for me, the, the public need for such a use is a huge thing, and, and the different things we're trying to do downtown, this really, really doesn't fit. So to marginally try to put it in, and secondly, going back to the amount of effort put in, so they, they tell me two people are here, but I got a drawing that doesn't show one, one desk, they might move in and have five desks and five people. I don't know, 'cause I don't have any information, so if you, if you ask me, based on the information I, I, I've been given, or, or shown, or have, have, uh, scratched out myself, I don't have enough information to say yes, even if they met all the criteria, because I have no idea what they're gonna do in the building, I don't know how many offices are gonna be in there, and if I look at the draw, the only thing I can make out of this drawing is that the doctor has four, uh, what would be, uh, operatories or studios, so she could work on four people at a time, she had four people there, five spaces are already gone of the twelve. That along with the six for the apartment is eleven, leaves no, you know, so if you show me the inside of what's gonna be done here, then maybe I could make a more informed decision, right now, I have to be an absolute no, because there's no info- information, no thought process, nothing, no, no energy put in to getting this approved, I, I can't in good conscience say yes.
Then, then, then table it until, uh, Ed gets you those answers, because-
Then I'll make a motion to table it, if the, well, we have to vote on the first motion, 'cause there is a much-
We have to vote on it first.
But, uh, uh, Mayor, I mean, my comment would be, we don't have to approve it, even, like, as Alderman Woods said, even if they meet all the criteria, I mean, there's constantly parking issues there as, as it is, and they're parking in Helen's Deli, and we're allowing them to do that, even if, even if we block it off, there's, we're gonna continue to have parking issues there. And we, we bought the ready electric, we tore that building down, I'm gonna have residents complaining that there's a bunch of parking cars over there.
I would, Peter, I would suggest, I would suggest, take this motion you have now, right, and then you vote it down, and then motion to table to get some of these answers addressed, and then we can make an informed decision.
Tony Catalano, can I be recognized?
You, go ahead, Alderman Catalano.
Yeah, so, um, you know, it's got here that's gonna be, um, day labor service, or potentially applicants are not gonna be waiting around for work, how do we know that? What guar- ki- kinda guarantees do we have, that's not gonna be like ten, fifteen people hanging around there waiting for work? Yeah, that's, that's another issue that I'm looking at, uh-
Yeah, I, I would agree with that one too, Alderman Catalano, I mean.
Again.
Go ahead, Mayor.
So either rescind the motion that you guys made, and then put the motion to table, and we'll get some answers.
Or we'll take a vote.
One at a time!
Alderman Messina would like to be recognized?
Go ahead, Alderman Messina.
We have a motion, we have a second, let's take a vote.
Yep, I agree, uh, do we have any other questions?
Alder- Alderman Woods, one quick question, on the-
Okay, Alderman Woods, go ahead.
I, I would say, as, as I think everybody said or agreed, so let's vote on this, if it gets voted down, I, it, it's still gotta go to council, that gives Ed, if you wanna move it back a week for them to get more information to, and present a case. At the council meeting.
No.
Uh, who, who said, uh-
I'd rather get this stuff done at a committee meeting, sorry, this is Nunzio, I'm sorry, Peter.
Okay.
Push him back to a committee meeting. I would rescind the motion and ta- make a motion to table.
Um, well, well, let's take a roll call, and then we can make a motion to table.
Right, okay.
Ed, do you have any comments?
I, I don't know, can we make a motion to table after we failed something?
I didn't think you could, Mayor.
I think you need to rescind the motion, make a motion to table the next committee.
If we wanna do that.
Right, if we wanna do that.
That, that would be the more proper way, because if you make the motion and kill it, well, then it's dead, it'll come to committee-
Well, they, they still have, they still have the opportunity to come to the council meeting.
I know, but I understand, but-
Yes, I, I would agree, um, well, Jeff, well, let me, uh-
This, this should be discussed in committee. One at a time, please.
Okay, hold on, yeah, one at a time, uh, let me, uh, call on Jeff Murmas, any comments?
I was just gonna say, procedurally, I thought that a motion to table takes precedent, and I wasn't sure if it got seconded or not.
It didn't.
Okay.
No.
Yeah, but when there's a motion on the floor-
Well, if I sec- if I second it, go ahead, Mayor, one at a time, guys.
When there's a mo- I thought that when there's a motion on the floor, you either rescind that motion and then make a motion to table and second. The motion to table overrides if somebody's been trying to make a motion to approve, my understanding, I could, could be wrong procedurally.
Well, my motion was to approve, the, the motion was to approve.
I, I understand, but we, so you have a motion, but the consensus is to table, the consensus, we should rescind the motion and bring him back to committee in a couple weeks. This way we have some time to get this information.
Um, City Manager Murmas, could you respond to that, please?
Uh, well, I mean, we've done it both ways in the past, I mean, we have tabled things when there's questions for more information, and we have advanced, uh, to the council. I will say that with everything going on, it may be a little tight to try to get the information, uh, back and forth by next week, uh, we probably could get it, but I would just say with the situation as it is now in the world, it is a little bit tough these days, um, so I think either would work, um, but it depends on how the council votes.
I think we're better-
Alderman Woods?
Uh, yeah, Alderman Woods, did you have a comment?
Yeah, you, you, you don't have to make it to the, you could push it back to the two council meetings, it doesn't have to be that following council meeting.
That is correct, Jeff, uh, uh, Manager Murmas, uh, talking, yeah, that is correct.
So, why, why don't we just do, why don't we just do that, that gives them the time, that keeps it in place, that keeps it moving forward, that gives them the time to put all those ducks in a row and, and, and come back.
Yep, I would, I would agree, um, nothing else, well, let's take a roll call.
Can I inter- can I, can I, Jeff again, can I interject too, real quick?
Yeah, go, go, go ahead, talk, uh, Mr. Murmas.
I, I, we've done it, uh, I believe a lot of times what we've done is, when there's questions like this as well, we pass it, um, to council, 'cause it goes to council anyway, and then at council, we would then, uh, deny or pass, so I don't, I don't know if that matters either.
Alderman Woods?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, Alderman Woods.
Yeah, it doesn't, it can go, it can go either way, we, we, we've done both, where they resurrected themselves from the grave at the council meeting, so, uh,
Right.
Whatever, whatever the recommendation is, the recommendation is, and we'll, we'll give them time, so that they don't have to be at the next council meeting, but the following, which gives them three weeks, uh, to get their stuff together.
I, I would concur with Alderman Woods, so with that being said, let's take a roll-
Alderman Messina, would you like to be recognized?
Yep.
Yes.
Uh, yes, Alderman Messina.
Call the question, please.
Okay, roll call, please.
What are you voting on?
Yeah.
It, it's a motion to approve with the conditions that you had put on there.
Okay, just wanna make sure, I know we're voting this, so there's no motion, there was no second on the table, okay.
Correct.
There was a second on the table.
There was a second by Alderman Woods.
No, he made the motion.
Alderman made the mo- Alderman Woods made the motion.
Okay, so who was-
And I seconded it.
Eugene.
Okay, I did not hear that.
I didn't.
I, I, before it was second, I withdrew the motion, 'cause I said that we, I couldn't do it, there was a motion on the floor.
Okay, alright.
Let, let's take the- Let's- let's take the vote, roll call, please.
Alderman Wesley, can I- what is a motion now?
The motion is to approve with the conditions of the handicap parking, the twelve spots, and the- the site, line of sight.
Okay.
And- and to get- and to get better floor plans, or look at what they're doing there. I have no- we have no idea.
Exactly, let's go ahead, take...
There's gotta be some drawing of what's going on in that building.
Okay, let's take, uh, let's take the call, roll call, please.
Okay, Alderman Sorrentino.
No.
Alderman Jacob.
No.
Alderman Woods.
No.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
No.
Alderman Catalano.
No.
Alderman Messina.
No.
May I have- may I have a floor chairman?
Uh, yes, go ahead, uh, the- who is- I can't- can't tell who that is, who is that?
E- Eugene, Alderman Wesley.
Okay, yeah, yeah, go ahead, Alderman Wesley.
So I would make a motion to table it now until two weeks next to the council meeting, or committee meeting, I'm sorry.
But there's already a- but there's already a motion to not approve it, so, and they- they have to come into the...
There's- there's nothing to table anymore.
Nothing to table anymore.
Well, let me a- let me ask you this question, so if we killed it, they can't come back now, they would have to go back again. That's why I said...
They could come to the city council. As Alderman Woods said, they could come to the city council meeting in two weeks, and not- not the next one, the following one, and show what- put on their case for why they think we- they should- we should approve this.
Okay, fine, thanks.
Al- Alderman Woods, to be recognized?
Go ahead, Alderman Woods.
Yeah, so, we- we've given information to, uh, Mr. Cage, so he knows the things or the reasons why this got shot down. He's gonna pass that on, we're gonna be friendly and- and push it off one council meeting so that they have time to get their ducks in a row, and they could come back and try to get the information and- and resurrect it, if you will, right? I believe that, I think that that's the path that we're following.
Yep, that- that's what we've discussed.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
Uh, Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes, Alderman Sorrentino.
Over here, something's got something. Uh, Ed, is there any way that you could perhaps recommend or show to these applicants a site that would be a win-win situation, uh, for them as well as the city, and that be a visual downtown eastern entrance in the Wooddale that may have parking already and have all these other issues put to rest? As an alternative to this parking dilemma and all this other stuff, plus a Black and a Half Way, another similar business? And as Alderman Catalano brought up, uh, the day labor, I don't think we need that, uh, visual as people are entering or exiting the city. Find them another location.
Uh, Ed? Yeah, Ed, did you have a comment on that?
The applicant, uh, it's Ed Cage, um, the applicant, just on the day labor side of things, the applicant did testify that there would be no da- day labor. Um, in terms of looking at other locations, I think what I wanna do is, um, talk to, uh, City Manager Mermis, we've got our direction in terms of, you know, uh, when it comes back at city council. Uh, the applicant can provide all the information, so, uh, we have the floor plan, uh, we have the site vision. So I think all these things will flush out, uh, in the next few weeks, so that when it comes back to city council, it's very clear that, you know, what they're applying for, whether that- whether they meet the code in terms of parking or not, and the vision, uh, clearance and all that. But in terms of...
Hold on, so who's- yeah, who's talking in the background?
Alright, the motion's already, uh, the motion failed, the item's off the agenda, let's move on.
Okay, items to be considered at future meetings, uh, facade program grant, April, Airbnb code revisions, April. Um, anything else? With that being said...
Uh, one question, Chairman, uh...
Yep, go ahead, Alderman Woods.
With the facade program grant going on in April, when is- when is that, is that already scheduled to go to Streetscape, or... Is that coming up?
City Manager Mermis?
Yeah, I'll- I'll interject real quick, that was- that was a lefto- that was a leftover, probably before all the COVID nineteen stuff, so that item would have to go to Streetscape first, that item likely will be delayed.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, with nothing else, I make the motion to adjourn, to have a second.
Second.
Uh, any questions?
Who's that? Who?
Alderman Woods.
Who's second? Wood, Art?
Alderman Woods.
Yeah, yep.
Okay.
Okay. Any questions? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed, uh, we are adjourned.
Okay, this is, uh, Alderman Tony Catalano, I'd like to bring the Public Works Committee, I wanna call, um, court to order, um, minute taken, please stay note that the same council members are present. And next, I need approval of the minutes of, uh, March the twelfth, two thousand and twenty, Public Works Committee meeting. That is my motion, do I have a second?
Alderman Wesley's second.
Alderman Jacob's second.
Any corrections? If there's no corrections, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, report and recommendations. So let's, uh, the approval of an agreement between the City of Wooddale and Dami, uh, Mechanical Industries, Inc., for the, uh, fiscal year ending two, uh, two twenty, uh, wastewater treatment facility improvements, not to exceed in the amount of a hundred and fifty-three thousand and eighty dollars, that is my motion.
Second.
Second, Alderman Jacob.
Alderman Messina.
I have a- Alderman Ca- uh, Catalano, Eugene, I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
What- what are they gonna be doing? Maybe I don't have it here.
You mean the... Is, um...
Alderman Catalano, this is Director Lang, I can answer that question for you.
Go ahead.
This is, uh, some minor repairs to both, uh, the north and south treatment plant. Um, you all know, we have a- a major project for the south treatment plant lined up in, uh, a few years. This is just some necessary repairs to keep the plant operational, as well as some HVAC repairs to the north treatment plant, which weren't addressed, uh, during the- the major project back in two thousand thirteen.
So, uh, um, Tony, can I cut in again? So, my question is, is it for- so this contract is for both wastewater treatment plant?
Yeah, this is Director Lang, that is correct.
Any other questions?
No. Alan, I'll call you tomorrow on this, though, I have a couple questions off.
Roll call?
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
And Alderman Messina.
Oh, yeah, motion carries. Okay, next is a report and recommendation, um, award contract for Ward Two and Three Stormwater Project. Um, is, um, do we have Robinson Engineering to answer some questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Aaron Fundich is on the line from Robinson.
Okay, thank you. Um, so- so my- my question is, um, I know that I was...
Make a motion already, Tony?
Yeah, I- I'm- I'll make the motion. Do I have a second?
Sunny's second.
What?
What's the motion, Tony?
What is- what is the motion?
Well, the motion is to recommend the award contract for benchmark construction for Ward Two and Three Stormwater Project in amount not to exceed nine million, seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four dollars and sixty-five cents, that is my motion.
Second.
Sunny's seconds.
Okay, any questions?
Yeah, I do.
Go ahead.
Alderman Wesley, a couple questions. This contract that we're approving, and somehow I don't have it in my- when is the start of that project?
The construction, presuming the council will award the contract formally on April second, the timetable for construction is to start right after Memorial Day, the last week in May.
Okay.
Hold on, hold on, that was Aaron's Fundich speaking from Robinson. You have to announce yourself, Aaron, when you speak.
Sorry about that, this was Aaron.
Alderman Catalano, can I go on? I have a couple more.
Go ahead.
Okay, the other question is, what is the- is this the contract, what is the penalty on this? For- for, if they don't finish any on the school property?
There- there is a series of interim completion deadlines, partially related to the school, partially related to how quickly they need to move on the project so that driveways at the various, uh, townhome driveways are not out of service for more than four weeks at a time. Uh, so there's a series of interim completion deadlines, and then a final completion deadline, and the liquidated damages amount for any of them is five thousand dollars per day, per calendar day. Uh, again, this is Aaron from Robinson.
Okay. Tony, Tony, can I do a follow-up? So do we have a copy of that contract? Did someone send us the copy of that contract?
I believe Public Works has a copy.
This is Director Lang, yes, we do have a copy, we didn't include it in the committee packet, as it is, uh, rather lengthy, so I have that, um, here at Public Works.
Okay, I would like to see the copy of that contract if possible, and then the other thing is, uh, if you don't mind, Tony, we haven't even had a final agreement with the school district, so I- I find it very hard to approve this, knowing that the school district, I know they've been delayed with their meeting, I totally understand that, but they haven't signed off on agreement yet.
Uh, Manager Mermis, I'll interject real quick, Attorney Bond has been working with the school district's attorney. Um, he is, uh, recommending that this passage of this contract would have, uh, no negative bearing with the timing of the IGA with the school district right now, and that the school district plans on, uh, taking this up at their next meeting, so he advised that we go ahead and proceed with this, um, and then the school district would pass that IGA, assuming in April.
This is Aaron Fundich, if I could- if I could add, Mr. Chairman, um, the other part of that is we will not issue a formal notice to proceed to the contractor until the easement agreement is in place with the school, as well as we're also waiting for a final agreement with ComEd. Uh, so until those are in place, we won't issue a formal notice to proceed.
Right. Now, now, I, uh, now, we're not gonna use a Duramax like you used to like to presentate, uh, the presentation here. So now, we're gonna be using the, um, um, it's gonna be the- the concrete, right? So, what are these, squares? These are square con- concrete, um, covas?
Yes, this is, uh, this is Aaron Fundich again, the- they will be ten foot by ten foot square box, uh, precast concrete box culverts. Some of them in- in one area will be ten feet by five feet. Um, so they- they are actually gonna provide slightly more storage than what the Duramax design was able to provide. Uh, but for the letter, or for the reasons that are enumerated in our letter, um, the design was able to be done in a different way, where the system will not need to be as deep, from an excavation standpoint, as the Duramax. We- we wanted to put this in as an alternate bid after we got feedback. We had, uh, a pre-bid meeting about, uh, at the beginning of this month, and numerous contractors had concerns about the Duramax and the depth, and we were- the- the tea leaves were such that we were- we were concerned we weren't gonna get a large number of bids on the Duramax system, and- and as it turned out, we only did get two, yet we got six on the concrete box alternative, and almost all of them were lower than all of the- than both of the Duramax bids. Um, so that- that was a- it was a reason that we did that, to provide, make sure that we were gonna get enough bids. We do believe that the concrete box culvert, we were told in the beginning of the design process that because of the weight of those box culverts, their cost would be tremendously high because they would need to be installed with a crane, and the crane rental alone was estimated in excess of a million dollars for the length of the project, and so that was why we believed up until the very end that the Duramax would provide the most cost-effective design. Uh, but as it turned out, and as the actual bids turned out, uh, that was not the case. And a big part of that is because Duramax pipes, they're much lighter, uh, in terms of their weight and their density. And so from a construction standpoint, while there's certain advantages with the lighter materials maybe not requiring as large of equipment to install it, the fact is, because they're so light, they needed to be installed deeper than what the concrete box culverts will be installed. Uh, because of concerns about buoyancy, you may recall from a prior council update that the soil borings that were taken in the project demonstrate a fairly high groundwater table. And the concern was that while these pipes are empty, we certainly needed enough cover over the top of the pipes, and per the manufacturer, they recommended at least five feet of cover over the top of these ten-foot diameter pipes. So by the time we put the system in place to get enough storage, we're- we were over thirty feet deep for a good portion of the project with Duramax, whereas with the box culverts, it's much closer to twenty to twenty-two feet deep. So we're saving on all that excavation costs, and even the lift station, that we redesigned the lift station for the alternate also, uh, it will be about nine feet shallower than what it would have needed to be with the Duramax. So the combination of all these factors, um, because with the concrete box, we don't need five feet of cover over the top. We can probably get by with just two feet of cover over the top. A- a lot of these factors went into the revised design.
And we're gonna increase, uh, a hundred and thirty thousand gallons of water, right, with this design?
Yes, yes, it's about, uh, I think it was point four acre feet, which turns out to be about, about a hundred thousand gallons of extra storage.
This is Alderman Jacob, there's gonna be recognized?
Go ahead.
Um, so, Aaron, uh, a couple questions. Number one, um, with the Duramax versus the precast concrete, so I'm looking at De- DeMa- DeMayo Brothers, they're at, uh, with Duramax, they're at, uh, roughly twelve million, uh, approximately twelve million if you round it off, and they're at a ten-five, so it's a million and a half, uh, less with concrete, but Benchmark is at like ten million versus fifteen million, so why is there such a big variation in those costs?
Um, quite honestly, we asked, oh, excuse me, this is Aaron again, uh, we asked Dur- we asked Benchmark that exact question after the bids came in, and they just felt that because of the additional depth, uh, that the- the job was far riskier from a construction point, um, with the Duramax system, and they felt that it's a- it's an easier jo- a much easier job to build, and- and they assigned, uh, a cost difference of almost a third, whereas the difference, maybe Benchmark didn't feel the Duramax was quite as, uh, challenging as perhaps Benchmark did. Yet Benchmark was still lower on the- on the concrete box alternate.
Okay, but my second question, could I continue with my- just my second question? Um, so, I mean, you guys originally recommended the Duramax, so with- with all being said and looking at these costs, I mean, are you- are you still comfort- are you still comfortable with, are you comfortable now with the precast concrete? Because, I mean, for eleven-nine, I mean, you would have the Duramax, I- I just wanna make sure that we're, you know, we're- we're also looking not just at cost, but, I mean, I don't want this project, I want this project to be a success, and I wanna make sure we're doing the right thing and using the right materials there.
Go ahead, Aaron.
This is Aaron, excellent, excellent question, Alderman Jacob, the, um, and we are, to answer the first part of it... This is Aaron. Excellent, excellent question, Alderman Jacob. The, um, and we are, to answer the first part of it, yes, we're very comfortable with the concrete box culvert, and quite honestly, we were very comfortable with the concrete box culvert over a year ago. However, it was our belief at that time that it was gonna be a prohibitively costlier option, again, because of the crane issue that I mentioned earlier. Um, so, we are- we're, from a technical standpoint, we are comfortable with both options. From a future operation and maintenance standpoint, we're very comfortable with the box culvert option for two reasons. One, the constructability of it in terms of having rigid concrete pipe is not quite as, um, dependent in terms of the quality of the contractor's installation. And what I mean by that is, with the Duramax pipe, it was gonna be very important that under that pipe, the- the stone bedding that would be placed under those circular pipes, because they were flexible, it was very important that that area be done with outstanding workmanship, something that's gonna be thirty feet deep in the ground, not all that easy to verify until after the fact in- in some cases. So, we believe that the- the concrete box culvert, in- in addition to being less expensive, has less construction risk. And then, from a future operation and maintenance standpoint, because it's all gonna be shallower, you know, say roughly twenty feet deep instead of thirty feet deep, future operation and maintenance activities, we believe, will be easier, uh, and less costly because of that. The other part of that is with the lift station now going to be nine or ten feet shallower than the old- than the prior design, electrical costs for pumping are also anticipated to be less than what the original Duramax design would have been.
Okay. It's, uh-
Alderman Catalano, could I ask one more question?
Go ahead.
Uh, just to address your, uh, Aaron, originally you had said because of the crane, so, is the crane at a million dollars? I mean, if they get delayed, I mean, if that crane's sitting there with bad weather for- at a million dollars a day, didn't you say it's like- or is that the total? I- I apologize. Was that the total a million dollars, or what was the daily rental?
Uh, good question. Again, uh, this is Aaron Fundage. The, um, the crane cost would be for the entire project, and it was estimated at about a million dollars, but that is within- there- there's not necessarily a bid item for crane rental. Uh, all of the contractor's costs, whether it be trucking, or crane, or whatever else, is all merged into various unit prices. There were about a hundred and twenty, I believe, bid items that they had to submit unit prices for. So, they're getting paid per foot of pipe, or per foot of curb that they reinstall, or per ton of asphalt. Um, there's- so, there- that's the payment mechanism, more than, say, per day or anything like that. So, that is all in the contractor's risk, in terms of it takes longer than- than he anticipates.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Jacob, thank you.
Uh, this is Alderman Catalano. Uh, this Benchmark Construction, is that a local company, or?
Uh, Aaron Fundage again. They are from Bartlett.
Okay.
Which, uh, at least their suburban office is in Bartlett. They also have an office in Chicago, and, you know, we did a pretty extensive reference check on them, both during the pre-qualification of bidders' process, you know, back when, you know, a month or so ago, when- when bidders were picking up the- the documents. Uh, Benchmark has the highest pre-qualification by IDOT standards in terms of the volume of work that they're able to procure. They have what- what IDOT terms as a super unlimited dollar amount, in terms of the size of projects that they're qualified to go after. We also, and the vast majority of their work has been Chicago, has been, uh, IDOT, Tollway. They've done a few projects for the Capage Water Commission. We did, uh, speak directly with a few of the reference, uh, references, even after the bid opening, uh, just to double check, you know, my- my concern, I wasn't concerned from a- a financial capability or a technical or- or construction standpoint. I wanted to make sure that I had references of projects that worked in residential neighborhoods, because we all know that this is gonna be very sensitive for hundreds of residents for- for the better part of the year, and the reference checks that we did, we're able to confirm that, yes, these guys, um, they- they are a very good contractor. I've had a personal look at them myself, but the reference checks turned out, uh, quite well.
Okay, good to know. Okay, is there any- any other questions?
Alderman Woods.
Go ahead.
Uh, so, most of my questions were already asked by a couple of other people, but I will, uh, while you guys were talking the beauty of being home and you're on offices, you can go online. So, I did, and I looked up, uh, Benchmark, and, uh, I'm not impressed easy by construction guys, uh, I'm pretty impressed. And if you actually go on their website and look, if I was standing at the school now, looking at the hall, looking down the street, they got a picture of the same job site, the same houses almost, I would think that they were already on Dalewood. So, forty feet in the ground, and they're pretty impressive. They're a large outfit. So, I- I'm- I'm feeling good that we'll be able to hit the timeline.
And- and I feel so much better with your expertise, Mr. Woods.
Thank you, sir.
And any other questions? If none, just have a roll call.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yeah.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
And Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, thank you, Mr. Fundage. And, uh, next is, um, items to consider for future meetings. Elizabeth Drive Bridge in April, engineering standards in April, and the George Street, Attasca, in a governmental agreement that's coming up in spring. And any other items to consider?
Alderman Catalano, this is, uh, Manager Murmus. I had a- a quick update on the, uh, engineering standards. That was another one that was put on there, hopefully, um, but with the COVID nineteen, that- that one might get delayed a little as well.
Okay. And- and I have one question. Some of the residents were asking me, when can they listen to these broad, uh, teleconferences? Where would they be listed?
Um, we have the recordings. We're still trying to come up with a recording plan. As you know, they're different than when we have a YouTube video, so we would either just have to post like an MP3 file, or just a blank screen with the audio. Right now, Attorney Bond recommended that all we do for now is make sure that we post the minutes online from the meeting.
Got it. Okay. So, uh, any other items to consider? If there are none, I'll move to adjourn. Almost. In favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.